Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regularly scheduled mayor and council meeting for the town of Berlin. It's Monday, March 13th, 2023. Please join us in a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First item on our agenda this evening, Agenda Item 1A, is the approval of minutes for the work session of February 27th, 2023.
Motion approved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Wors.
Second.
I have a second by Councilmember Ner. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Let the record reflect that the work session minutes of February 27th, 2023 passed unanimously with Councilmembers Burrell and Green absent. Up next is Agenda Item Number 1B, which is the regular session minutes from February 27th, 2023.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Councilmember Ner.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wors. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Let the record reflect that they passed unanimously. Up next is Agenda Item Number 2, and that's the Taylor House Museum's special event request. Then we do have Heather and Dr. Reed here with us this evening. So come on forward. Just come up to the table so everybody can hear. How are you? Congratulations.
We're just here tonight. It's sort of same request that we've had in the past. We are selling beer and wine at some of our events like we've done before. And so we're just asking again to do that again this summer. There is one additional date, which is Earth Day, and that's in partnership with Burley Builders. So we're kind of doing a new event. It's nothing different. We music on the lawn, same thing, beer and wine. So that's what we're requesting for our start of our season.
Thank you. Any questions for the representatives from the Taylor House?
Not a question, but I think it would be good for the Peach Festival. The same layout's gonna be as it has been since COVID.
Yes.
Not just on the lawn.
Spread out.
Spread out through town.
Yes, yes. I mean, we will still be running all the same things we've done, but yes. We've been encouraging people to also walk them down the street. And I guess may I also ask again, I know this has come up, but we do strongly ask that the street not be closed for Peach Festival because if you close the street right by Stevenson, it will block us off and we think probably create an unsafe bottleneck right there. So we requested that we still have the streets open. I don't know whether there are other ways. I think we talked about ideas of putting a sign up, maybe down by the fire department, one of the big, you know, like blinking signs that just says, please slow down, event ahead, something like that. But we're asking.
They may put it on their mark.
Oh, yeah. Something that we know, we totally understand about the traffic and lots of people, which we're really glad for, but we really are asking strongly that it not be like a usual town event where the street is closed.
But we are asking for Baker Street to be closed.
Yes, like we always do. Yes.
And there's no discussion about closing Main Street for that? At least at the staff level, there's nothing?
No, no. It has to be before State Highway, so if it's not being proposed to be closed, then it's.
Great. So I think we're all on the same page on that. So with that being said, we'll take a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Councilmember Nichols.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wors. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Let the record reflect that it passed unanimously. Thank you. So we can do about the marquee for the Peach Festival.
Oh, thanks. And then one last quick thing, I guess essentially for public works. I know you guys drop off like a quart de potty and pick it back up for different events. Do you know whether it's easier for you guys to drop one and leave it there for the whole season, like April or May, June, July, August?
Probably not. Reason being because we use for other events also.
Okay.
And then do you have the tendency to get it left over?
I don't know. Just saying. There you go. My.
Thank you. All right. Up next is Agenda Item Number 3, which is a discussion item on our agenda, and that's for the Rails to Trails grant application. Our town administrator, Mary Boland, Economic and Community Development Director Ivy Wells, and Planning Director Dave Inglehard are going to run point.
For the most part, I'm actually gonna turn it over. Excuse me, to Dave and Ivy, but bring your attention to the cycle report that Dave has prepared, as well as the cost estimates that DBF has put together that are included in your papers. Thank you.
Dave, Ivy?
If you, sorry about that. If you take a look at the screen or what's on the screen in front of you, just as a refresher, the, there's different slides, Kate, I guess you could go through, but the bike path is in two phases, the way it was designed with the original design grant we received in fiscal year 2017, I believe it was, from the Maryland Department of Transportation Bikeway Program. We got the design from Heron Park, Old Ocean City Boulevard, down to Broad Street. It hops Main Street and ends at Broad Street. That's Phase 1. That's what's referred to as Phase 1 in your report. Phase 2 would complete the trail from Broad Street down to the town boundary on the southern end, that Evans Road, where it ends at Evans Road and Buckingham Lane. So as you can see in the report, the most recent budget estimate for the construction, the total of the two phases comes to basically $1,263,000 if you round it down. This program is a 25% cost to the town of Berlin in cash or in-kind services. The total for that would be for both phases. Phase 1 and Phase 2 would require $315,819 in matching funds from the town. We currently have money on the books from last fiscal year and from fiscal year '22, which were, some of it was from Worcester County, almost $74,000 from Worcester County for fiscal year '23. As a match to our contribution, we had $76,000 just north of that from ARPA funds in our fiscal year 2023 budget, our current budget. And there were funds available from the FY '22 budget from Worcester County of just under $40,000. So the total of all of those, if we can carry forward the FY '22 monies, would be So that gives us a shortfall to come up with for this year of $86,135 to do both Phase 1 and Phase 2. In addition, DBF has to bring the design to a 90% completion status for the MDOT Bikeways Program, and they've estimated those costs to carry us through RFP, or Request for Proposals, and the bid process and permitting processes with state agencies at an additional $42,000. Are there any questions?
Have we received any reasoning why the grant hasn't been approved the past two years?
We did. We had a grant meeting. Do you want to elaborate on that?
We had the mayor, Town Administrator Mary Boland, Economic Development Director Ivy Wells, and I had a meeting with.
I also want to give Patty a shout out. She's here as well.
Yep.
Patty was with us.
Patty Stevens from the County Bike People was with us on the Zoom call in February. They were looking for more complete engineering that that was submitted, more comments from State Highway as far as signage and where we intersect with their roads at the beginning on Old Ocean City Boulevard, at the middle where we meet Main Street, and comments also from the railroad. We have an agreement with the Maryland Delaware Railroad for an easement within their right-of-way to construct the path, and that agreement was included with the last submitted. But there was just one or two questions about the maintenance of the path, and we've moved to clear that up for this year. In other words, it'll be in the agreement with the railroad. We sign on to that agreement annually, so we'll be doing that before we submit this time with that revised language, so it'll be clear for the Bikeways Program. And it was a competitive process. And I know from the last, the last go-around, the cities and towns or counties that got some money, several of them went to complete previously constructed paths. So it was, they had gotten a grant, did some work. This was a follow-up grant to complete the work. So I know several of them got further monies than they had, you know, four, five, six years earlier.
The other part is they asked for a copy of the lease agreement and the grant application, and we did include a letter of support from the railroad, but they still had some questions about the railroad support. The other thing I want to add is that our design work had some age on it, too. We didn't have the funding available after the design work was completed initially to be able to apply, so our design did have a little age on it.
So are these drawings that we're, or these depictions that we're looking at now are?
Previous.
Okay. Well, so if I'm looking at a bird's eye view of the path from Broad, whoa, oh.
Keep going.
Stop, please. Okay, there we go. So if I'm looking at this one here from a bird's eye view, from Broad Southwest, the proposed path is gonna be on the right side of the track?
I think these are conceptual. They're not, they're just to give an idea of what it's gonna look like, but they're on.
The easement, the agreement, the access agreement we have with the railroad is on the east side of the tracks. So if you're heading south, it's on the left side of the tracks.
Okay. So then, I guess what I'm trying to get at here are the properties on west, how is that affecting them this path?
The easement's all within the railroad's right-of-way. Railroad owns the property by federal statute. 33 feet from the center line of the tracks is their property, is the railroad's property. They've given us the easterlymost portion of 14 feet for an access agreement. We're allowed to build this within that 14 feet. So the closest it would come to the tracks, it would be 19 feet to the center line of what are railroad tracks? So three feet wide?
Okay.
48 inches wide, so.
I just wanted to make sure because there was also the Henry, I believe, the Henry's Mills Stormwater Pond down there, but this is on the other side.
It's on the other side from that pond. Yep.
Thank you.
The other takeaway is that I want to point out the $1.2 million price tag of Phase 1 and Phase 2 is a significant amount of money, but I want to put it in perspective that the grant requires a 25% match of that total amount. And with that, we're grateful that the county has been willing to at least split portions of that with us. So our, the total match from us is about 12.5%, excluding those design funds, and then the county would be about the same.
Is DBF, are they working on, I don't know the measurements there, but obviously they're taking into consideration the ditches and the drainage that's on these sites.
Yes. Stormwater is in the design, yes. The initial design, and it will be updated for this design, too. It would have to be because like with the county and the state for soil and erosion and sediment control, it would have to be updated, you know, when we submit this for construction.
Is there a $5,000 square foot of disturbance served? So we will have to go all for the ENS measure.
Yeah.
Just to clarify, this goes back to the back part of Heron Park, right? I think it does. No, it stops right at, okay.
Right at the entrance. There was a.
I thought that it went back to the part that we wanted. If not, we should explore that.
Can we move the picture?
The.
Heron Park area.
There was, and we termed that Phase 3 at the beginning?
Back to the drawings.
Because when you get back, when you get back further up, closer to, I'll say closer to Route 50 and back across, north of the, or west of the ponds at Heron Park, there's a bridge in the woods there. Not safe, not safe for a bikeway or pedestrian bikeway to carry the paving. DBF had looked at that when they did the initial design. The cost of that bridge and the benefit to the town, we kind of had left that Phase 3 because it was gonna dump out onto Route 50, and it would have been a lot more elaborate design, a lot more expense, if you will, per square foot. And the connectivity for the Bikeways people to Salisbury to the west is via Broad Street and Liberty Town Road already. So they even suggested to us, leave that till the end. You've got your access agreement that grants it to you from the railroad. Keep that in place, but that may never get built. That was our initial consult with them when we were using the design grant back in 2016 and 2017.
We may explore that as a future phase. If this one's successful, then possibly run it back to the passive use section of the park.
And that's, and that's something that could happen even with Phase 1 and Phase 2. They could be applied for as standalone Phase 1 this time, Phase 2 another time. That's possible.
But the recommendation is to do both together this go-around, Phase 1 and Phase 2, because we have the available match funds potentially from the county.
That's essentially the direction that staff is seeking, is whether you want us to move toward Phase 1 or both.
Both would be the recommendation, I think, unless there's a difference on this body. But I think both would be.
And we wanted you to be aware of, when Mary's talking about staff, we've had several discussions, and more recently, a few more. We have a letter of intent that the mayor will be sending out by April 1st. Now, that doesn't necessarily commit us, you know, we will be saying we'd like to be in this cycle, which starts May 1st, but we're trying to get this all done very early this time, so that if there are any tweaks that Bikeways sees, anything we're missing, we would hope, and we had this discussion with them, they'd let us know, and we'd have time to get it in. We have a whole list of items from them that be sure you have it in. And so we've been working hard to try and make sure we have everything we need early. So what we're looking for really is some direction. We usually will get a motion from you, from your group, that allows us to proceed with, given in the grant application. We will need that by May 1st. This, tonight, was put on intentionally as a discussion item, so you're aware in your budget talks that this is coming. And we can get any input that needs to happen from the public in between, but we intend to move on this early. We want to have a draft done way before May 1st, so when May 1st gets here, hopefully we can hit send, and we're in the hopper first. We'd like that. I think we have a good relationship with the Bikeways people. They were gracious to take a request from us, from the mayor and us, to have a Zoom meeting with them to address it head-on. They didn't have to do that. They could have said, well, it's in the packets. All you have to do is look online. And they did not. They took their time. They sent us some examples of successful projects from the last go-around, from last year, fiscal year '23, and that gave us a great, we got the whole plan set for another city. And I sent that on to DBF. I said, everything that's in this was successful, so we are gonna have everything in this. That's how we, and they're happy to deal with it that way. So we're hopeful, and we've been there before with them. They like the project, the Bikeways people, and they see no reason it can't be successful.
I don't think we need a motion tonight. I think just so that everybody's on the same page, but once we get ready to submit for the grant, I think.
The application will come back before you at that, at that point, yes. We just need a direction on how staff needs to, to both the time.
And I think the other part is that's worth mentioning, and we've said this numerous times before, but the streets downtown are too narrow in many places for us to be able to incorporate a bike lane or things of that nature. So this is really that alternative path. And since it is a state highway that runs through downtown in many respects, we're leaning on the state for a little bit of assistance with that as well. So.
And the town's department, the county.
The county, yep.
To make this thing happen.
I agree.
I think what we're looking for tonight is a financial approval that this, the matching funds will be in subsequent budgets to allow us to be able to, if we get the grant and there's no money in the budget, to be able to make that match. We just want to make sure that we're doing the work and the money's going to be there when we need it. I think that's what we're looking for.
Thank you. To Ivy's point, Natalie did note that these numbers are not included in the budget draft that you have, so that.
In some respects, they are. In some respects.
In some respects, but not the full amount, not the $1.2 million.
So what does the in-kind actually, what does that look like?
In this case, the in-kind would be primarily cash or other grant funds, the county funds, the funds that the town has already committed to the project. But there's little opportunity in this particular project for town forces to do work. There may be some, but it will be limited.
Well, this has been in the budget the past three years.
Yeah, this would be the third fiscal year that it would be in the budget.
I think we should keep it going. Keep going.
And I think, and the effort is to put the best foot forward this year because the county has been gracious. They've given us a match in FY '22. They've given us a match in FY '23. We're asking for those matches, since they haven't been touched, the same towns matches for those years, we're asking to carry those forward to the next fiscal year. There is a spot where in FY '22, we had the 39875, where we didn't carry that forward to FY '23, so we will be rolling that back to FY '24s. So just.
So the 39875 is gonna go into the draft?
For the town's contribution. Yep, so that would be coming back. So just little areas like that. Now, Dave, one thing I did have a little bit of confusion on, the DBF estimate to bring those plans up to where we need them, is any of that matchable or no? That's all gonna be front-end by us?
Two different things you can do with the Bikeways Program. You can ask for design funds.
No, we don't want to do that.
And that would put us back on asking for construction funds. So.
Bring the design.
And it says specifically in their program, construction funds cannot be used for design purposes. Because I guess they've learned that you run into problems once you start construction, then it's gotta be redesigned and re-approved, and you're spending money out of the grant they gave you for paving a path, let's say, and then it's not there to complete the construction. So they, you know, one is a design grant, one is a construction grant.
They don't like to tie up large sums of money while the design grant is being done because in that scheme of things, it's for the minor.
And it's probably highly unlikely that they would award design funds again, since they designed it more.
That's true.
Okay. So if it is a discussion item, no action for this evening, but if there's anything that anybody would like to see added or additional information between now and when we come up with a formal request for the grant application, let us know either now or as that comes to your mind.
Well, I'm glad this breakdown actually came in, the staff report, so thank you, everybody. David, Dave, is this, like, I mentioned this has been in the year, in multiple years, so I'm glad this kind of clears it up a little bit for everybody, or for me, I think. So thank you.
Thank you. And Patty, thank you for being part of our conversations with MDOT and for helping look over our application materials and provide feedback. It goes a long way.
And for sending the video today.
All right. All right, up next is agenda item number four, and that's the Town Administrator's Report.
Not a whole lot this evening. I'm still working with Kate and Cody to transition those apartments. I should have done that last week. You know, it's, I've been doing it for 25 years, so it's going to take another couple of months to get them up to speed. Plus, there are just recurring things that happen every year that they're going to continue to need my guidance on. That said, we're working on the annual program open space plan. This is the first time we've actually been asked to submit that plan to the county, and I want to say the last time was in 2018. So, that, I'm hoping bodes well that perhaps some program open space monies are going to come available to municipalities again. We saw community parks and playgrounds, funding that we can seek, but hopefully it's another, another avenue. I have also initiated the process of trying to nail down what kind of system would work well in this room for audiovisual. It's an awkward room. We've had other providers tell us that, but I think that something can be looked at because it's so long and, and low, it makes it kind of awkward. But I think that, I think that we'll come up with something.
Have you looked at any preliminary systems?
We have, Kelsey and I actually listed a couple of things a few years ago, one of which was the same company that provides Worcester County with their system. That's the main one that I can recall from, like, on the name, but yes. Yeah, there were a couple of others that, but they're, they all have essentially the same kind of functions, just how they kind of present on the, the web users end, for the most part.
Everything sounds great till you hear the price tag.
Yeah.
But there's one with this sometimes, but, but yeah. And it's been a couple of years, so I'm sure it's changed, you know, technology.
And we want something that's easy to operate-
Absolutely.
As well as something that's easy for the public to follow along with.
Yes.
Something that follows along with our agenda. So if there's an item that somebody finds, just like similar to the county's.
Yeah.
But if-
The county's is a good system.
If there's an agenda, somebody wants to see a particular item, they can go to that and see the discussion. We've also talked about making sure that it's live streamed on the public access channel and something that can play on loop periodically on the access channel. So those things are all big parts for us, as well as this group. I know that we've all brought that to the field quite many times.
I do recall some of the systems that Kelsey, or at least one of the systems that Kelsey and I did a few years ago, would have had us essentially running a TV station. And we were not interested in doing that. That was a bit much to try to, to keep up with, but, you know.
The Conracks Department at High School.
Well, there's that idea. But what we're doing right now is just working on RFP to address what we're looking for. It's just, that's all I have.
Any questions for Mary?
Yeah, actually, I have two. On your, referring to your report here, if you're working on grant approvals for various stormwater-related projects, are you able to explain some of those, or are they still-
Well, they are grants that we talked about before. It just took a little while to get the paperwork. I am working on actually updating the whole spreadsheet for the, the town's forayons. Off the top of my head, I'd be afraid to say anything with fear that I would misquote, but I will have that spreadsheet hopefully shortly.
And then my other question, I didn't know exactly who to ask, so I just sent it right to you, Mary. In the, in the check report, there was a sign-
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. That's so fastly.
I didn't, just to clarify what that was.
I think, I think Ivy, that was one of yours, to sign signs for-
Dr. Tinley?
Oh, the Dr. Tinley sign.
Yeah.
For Tinley Park on Commerce Street.
Is it the sign that's on top of the street sign, or the sign that's on the building?
No, it's going to be a historical marker sign at that little pocket park that where the EV stations are going to be. There's going to be, I think, a bench there, and then that's also going to be a, a sign with the history of Dr., of Reverend Tinley.
Okay. Thank you. That was all.
And was that funded by a grant?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mayor? All right, let's start with our departmental reports, and we'll start with Economic and Community Development.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Councilor.
Good evening.
Like my report I turned in last week, I'll just go over some of the highlights. Working with a variety of business and property owners on facade grants, since there is a, a set deadline of April 14th, there's been quite a flurry of people realizing that they would like to do something. So I've been meeting with them and helping them out with their applications. The, on Wednesday, there, the benches that we ordered grant-funded are being delivered to Public Works. We're getting, I think, nine benches. We're replacing the one out front of Town Hall, which has seen better days. We're going to take the plaque off and, and put the plaque on the new bench. And there'll be benches on Williams Street and some other areas where we noticed that it would be great for people to be able to, to rest while they're walking and shopping around in downtown. The Berlin Horticultural-
Advisory Board.
Advisory Board helped pick out some plants or pots that are also going to go on Williams Street, and also window baskets, and the lamppost baskets, which were grant-funded from a year and a half ago, are finally going to be in next month. So there's going to be a lot of planting and all that going on for the next couple of months in, in Berlin. Allison and I are working on Take Pride in Berlin Week and Cleanup Day, Set for Earth Day, so we're going to be focusing on that the next few weeks. And I will be attending the National Main Street Conference the last week in March, so I'll be, I won't be at the next meeting, I'll be out of town. But I'm still working, so if you need me, just text me. That's it.
Thank you. Any questions for Ivy? All right, up next is our Planning Director, Dave Moore.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Again, like Ivy referred to, the Berlin Horticultural Advisory Board, or Board or Committee?
That's a committee.
Should be a committee, right, not a-
Yeah.
Was renamed at your last meeting. And the Wednesday right after, they brought the benches, the planters that Ivy was referring to, to the Historic Commission, and that was all well-received, and they were told to bring back more good work. So, you renamed it, and they went right into action. Then last Wednesday, the Planning Commission on the, the 8th, they met and they passed a motion in this year's fiscal year '23 budget out of ARPA funds, there was a $30,000 line item budgeted for a, a growth element discussion with the community, to be facilitated by a consultant. And we have had, the mayor, again, Town Administrator Mary Bowlin, and I have had discussions, one of the Planning Commission members, with a consultant, his name is Dero Thadani, specializes in small-town America, has impressive resume. He's an architect and a urbanist and a land planner. And the Planning Commission has had several discussions about this growth element, and at last week's meeting, they made a motion to recommend to the council that they move forward with hiring Mr. Thadani to conduct this, these services for the town within that $30,000 ARPA funds budgeted line item. Now, I don't have, I asked Mr. Thadani by email today, he said I'd have it by Friday, a quote for his services and the scope of work and the services and deliverables we can expect. We all expect this to be layered, that he would come and study the town with us over a couple of days, return, he's from DC area, right in DC, I believe, and come back with a plan for a public presentation. And we, so far, we think we might do this at, if we can, one of the public spaces at the library, so that we could have, you know, good public attendance. And when I have that estimate from him and the scope of work, we intended to have it by Friday so that we can make it part of the packet for a motion from the mayor and council at the meeting on the 27th, Monday, May, March 27th, your meeting. So, we are pleased to get that far, and, and we think that he can give us what he needs. Some of the deliverables we expect are some, after some input from the community, or a lot of input from the community, I'm hoping, we can make some changes as we, we see fit to the comprehensive plan, specifically our growth areas as designated within the, I'm aware that the county is holding public sessions coming up shortly with the public to, again, redefine their growth areas. And in the past, the county areas, the growth areas, where growth is encouraged, often mirror ours. Now, do we want them to be the same and have our own control, or do we want to be under control of the county's Planning Commission and county structure? This would affect us for annexations moving forward, land use, all kinds of things. So we, it's, it's time that we do something to protect Berlin's interests, and hopefully they, they coincide with the town. If not, then we have our own, our own road to, to go down. So, I would hope, once I had those, those figures and that scope, then we can move forward at the, at your next meeting. That's all I have.
Thank you. Dave, I want to thank you as well for helping spearhead that. I know you've been championing the, this adding at least some funding for this element in past fiscal year budgets.
Thanks.
I also want to give an acknowledgement to the Planning Commission member that's assisting you with that, Mr. Ron Cassio, for all of your assistance in helping bring the rule to our notice as well. So thank you for that, and hopefully you'll be part of that conversation on the 27th. Ron, you got anything to add?
Yeah, Dave did pretty good.
Okay.
I'm just glad you're here, I did.
Any questions for Dave?
It's not a question.
Go ahead. Whichever one, ladies first.
No, I was looking at Ivy because she said something to say.
I wanted to add, I wanted to speak on Tim's behalf, since he's not here today, something that he wanted to bring up, that we discussed at the staff meeting. So when it's Tim's turn, I'll, I'll speak on Tim's behalf.
All right. Well, I just wanted to say that, you know, once we get down, down the road here, how important, and I just want to stress for everyone listening and watching, how important, it might not seem like a how important community involvement is generally, but especially when it comes to what we're talking about with growth in Berlin. And, so, stay tuned. But it's just so important to be involved, and that's, that's all.
Councilmember Nickels?
I'm just pleased that we are on the road to being proactive because the reactive approach is on. And so I am very glad that we are trying to be forward-moving. Kudos to those involved with making this happen, and let's see what results.
Thank you. All right. Thanks, Dave. Ivy, in, stand in for Tim?
Sure.
You probably know where you know it, but I know Mary does. The, at, at our last
staff meeting, Tim brought up the, the deterioration of the lower half of our historic lampposts in downtown due to dogs. Dogs lifting their legs.
They're feeling this way.
Yes. And many people don't notice, but if you look at some of the lampposts, you, you see how deteriorated they are. And yes, they're unsightly, but the biggest problem is that the acid is getting into the infrastructure of the lampposts and deteriorating the, the wires. And Tim obviously can explain it more, and it could take a half, and I already explained the intricacies of this, but he wanted to bring up to please watch-
Curb your dog.
Curb your dog, to, to make sure. But the interesting thing is, I reached out to some other Main Street community colleagues across the country and heard back from someone that actually, they have a product out there. You can hear me out on this. They have a product out there that they started using in London on the sides of the pubs to keep people from urinating on the sides of the wall. And you spray this stuff, I don't know what it is, but it bounces back at you, which is, it's, it's kind of, it's, it's funny, but I don't know. It's a possibility. So I passed that information on to Tim. Whether or not it, it's going to get used, I, I don't know, but it was a suggestion that they seemed to use and it worked. So, you know, I, if, if the newspapers are listening, just, you know, put something in there about-
Everywhere.
Watching where your dog, your ghost.
Our fire hydrant is stolen.
We could put a fire hydrant right there as a distraction.
Dave, gasp, anything? Anything?
No.
You want to call all the legalities of that?
Yeah.
All right, Jamie, Water Resources?
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
I've got a short staff report. We framed out and installed a new door at Frank Avenue Well. Service our borrowers and contractors getting ready for the year. Troubled shooting the school field lift station that kept tripping out. Three employees took an asset management for training and water and wastewater, and we received a quote and ordered parts to rebuild the SBR two-motive pump. That is an emergency, it's part of the process of the plant. So we went ahead and, I talked to Mary, and we went ahead and had to get going on. The parts are three weeks out. They were 20 weeks out, but they actually were able to find a set sooner for us. Also, as tend to the rate now as it stands, there would be two VMS signs going up on 346 in that area of IG Burton. Talked to the contractor today, they're tentatively doing the water time for IG Burton, March 21st at 2000 hours to 0600 hours. So to start the 21st Tuesday night, they will wrap up Wednesday morning at 600 hours. Lieutenant Fisher helped me today. He contacted the State Police Barrett Sheriff's Office Central. I called Ocean City, Shaw, or Ocean Cities, Ocean Hines, and Berlin, and let them know, talked to the school board, let them know, just so that they wouldn't be called off guard, even though it's going to be overnight. And we'll have, I'll get with Kate and have her code red sent out for Monday night, but it's 8:00 PM until 6:00 AM. And this is all just to tie to IG Burton, East Water for the new building.
I'm sure glad you used layman's terms because, I mean, what time is it right now? Almost 21:00.
Well, when I was talking with the, when you're talking with the cops and the N911 people, they're on the 24-hour clock. So-
I get you.
They understand it better. And Lieutenant Fisher was saying, you know, when he was talking to them, he was, some people get, get time messed up with AM and PM, so.
It's best to use the 24-
So, I just wanted, you know, the schools know, well, I talked to Kim Heiser and Kim Hudson from the school board with the, the transportation, so. Just want everybody to know that it will be impassable for at least, well, 10 hours, so.
Thank you. Any questions for Jamie?
Yeah, I just want to say, Jamie, I, I know you're down a couple people, so I just want to give you a big thanks for all that you do for the town of Berlin and keeping up with things and keeping us-
Well, we, I, I mean, I can't say nothing much, or Tim's not here tonight, but, you know, I pull, lean on Jamie for his help and Tim's help, and they've been leaning on us when they were down, so, you know, what you do earlier in the year comes back and helps you later in the year, so.
But what a lot of people don't know is your job is 24/7, 365 days a year.
And, you know, I mean, we were in last night in the rain, so.
Thank you.
But I will say that I appreciate it a lot. We, I'm down another one this week. I had a tragedy in his family, so I won't worry. He's out for the week probably. But you know something, we'll, we'll get through it and, you know, we'll, we'll succeed.
We're hiring one more today.
But you're also hiring for town positions, so, and Water Resources are some of those positions. And Jamie, you always say it's Team Berlin, so.
Well, I mean, just because we work for an apartment, when you look at the, when you look at your check, it's from the town of Berlin. It's not Berlin Water Resources or Public Works. I mean, we work for one person, the, the community. So, I mean, that's what we try to make sure everybody's, you know, services are met and do the best we can.
Thank you for that. Any other questions for Jamie? All right, up next is our Public Works Director, Jimmy Charles.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
My voice is starting to fade, so.
Had a gig last night, didn't you?
He was partying too hard.
My singing career is very short. So I, I'll just take any questions if you have any.
Any questions for our Public Works Director, Jimmy Charles? All right, up next is our Even Resources Director, Kelsey Dunn.
I'll be very quick. You didn't get a weekly report from me because I was out of the country from the 1st to the 8th, so I was back in on the 9th, so playing a little bit of catch-up. But before leaving, I did, conducted interviews with both Public Works and Water Resources. We kind of held some joint interviews because we had a stormwater labor and a sanitation labor position open. We thought maybe we could, you know, see if we could find somebody to fill that. So we did try to hire four. We had two that did not pass some pre-employment stuff. So unfortunately, we're moving forward with two, but we are, one of them will be starting on Wednesday, and the other one was actually an internal employee, so he did a transfer. So, we are still looking for a distribution and collection technician, a stormwater labor, and now we have a, and this mayor's assistant position posted, as well as, we're always looking for police officers, so that one's always out there. And then also, before I left, Mary Bowlin, Jamie Letcham, Jimmy Charles, and myself took a reasonable suspicion drug and alcohol course, which was really helpful, just things to look out for, you know, in the workplace and stuff like that. So, last thing is that PayPoint HR said that they are hoping to have the wage and compensation study draft report to us soon. So, once it's in our hands, we will share that with you guys, so. That's all I got.
Thank you. Any questions for Kelsey?
Are they, well, soon, are they still shooting for the end of the month, this month?
She emailed me about a week ago, I think. I forwarded it to Mary, and she just said, "We're hoping to have a report to you within the next couple of weeks," so I'd imagine by the end of the month. But I'll follow up with her again and double-check, so.
Thank you. Any other questions for Kelsey? All right, up next is Kate Doll. Right, Doll?
That is very good.
Dow.
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 Dow. I'm working on it. Dow. All right, nothing. All right, any questions for Kate? All right. Up next is comments from the Council. We'll start with Councilmember Mayor.
Nothing tonight.
All right, thank you. Up next is Councilmember Nichols.
I got stuff, so.
Yes, one. Um, um, um.
Are you good?
I'm fine. I'm under the sky.
Okay, up next is Councilmember Works.
Well, thank you. I just have two, two things, and two discussion items, really. The first one is in regards to, I mean, leaving little questions here throughout the meeting, but stormwater, stormwater maintenance. And I want to thank Jamie, he responded very quickly to an email I sent earlier this week. I would like to follow up on some of those answers, if possible, and have a discussion among, among us that are here about something else. So, I did ask stormwater management facilities, how many there were, and an estimate in town is 200, 300 stormwater management facilities. So does that mean ditches as well? Is that you're including the whole Kinkaboo?
Well, some of it is part of the stormwater conveyance, so yes.
Okay. And it says here, the town, you, you replied, "The town's required to perform inspections every three years for all stormwater management facilities. And we use EA engineering to aid in the teaching and facilitating of these inspections." So, does that mean that we paid for those inspections?
We had interns.
We had interns do it. Mountain Coastal Bay paid for the last one, and he did the, and he was paid through Mountain Coastal Bay, and he worked through the town to go in that.
Okay. And the last question to the email here, just to clarify for me. The town does have inspection maintenance agreements for most, if not all, of the facilities. What, what does that mean exactly? Is that for ponds, ditches, everything, where HOAs, public, private, what does that mean?
It, most of it, everything, it has to do with, so if MDE would come in here, so if they would ask for our records, and that's all of our records of the ditches, ponds, anything that's affiliated with a stormwater conveyance, or that-
affiliated with a stormwater conveyance, or that, or the stormwater system has controlled drains and all that.
So, but in the end, currently, the responsibility of maintenance and whatnot lies with the private owner of said facility.
Or us, because we have a few in town also, so, I mean, we still have to do upkeep and maintenance of ours too.
There are all sorts of.
But we have easements, right, I mean, we can go, we have easements, right, we can go to certain places that are not town-owned, am I correct?
Well, the stormwater maintenance and inspection agreements, say you're talking about a residential development, okay, they have their own private stormwater pond, right? That agreement, we keep them in our office on file. That allows Jamie's people, or myself and Carolyn, it acts like an easement, allows us to be on the property, to inspect its condition and its operating efficiency. And then that's where EA would come in if we saw a severe problem, and we would advise the homeowners association, a lot of times it's at their request. This is the fix, and a lot of times it's just regular maintenance or regular clean-out, or you've got a bunch of branches stuck in that outfall pipe, and everything's backing up behind it, that's why the water backs up. And so when these, in the past, when these interns have gone out each summer, we'd send them out on a, you know, on a route, you know, we need to check this one, this one, this one, and tomorrow you'll check that one, that one, that one. They file a report, and we let the owner of that facility know that maintenance is required, or that it appears that it's functioning properly. But that allows us, like an easement, to be on the property, not to do work, but to observe it and.
To gain access.
Inspect it, to gain access, to observe it and inspect it, right?
Thank you.
The other thing I wanted to add here is a third possibility, which is the PDA, which is the Public Ditch Association, the Tax Ditch, there are a number of those on the outskirts of town.
Well, the whole, the reason I'm bringing this up is because I've mentioned before how I think we should do an overview of the utility, and I'm not saying that we need to do that tonight, but I just wanted to have a discussion on that and how, what affects, I'm not, I'm preaching to the choir, but what affects, one part of the system affects the whole thing, whether it's private or public, I mean, it is what it is. And I think that perhaps a work session, or I did email out asking for a specific agenda item to meet with Darrell when he's available, to talk about where we are with the grants process with stormwater, where, that's kind of why I mentioned earlier in the report, where we were on that, because I think, I mean, I think we just need to sit down and hammer it out and talk about it. One thing that was brought to my attention, and thank you to some residents who brought it, is a house bill that's been introduced in the general assembly, and I think that we should keep an eye on it. Now, I understand the cross-file date for the general assembly is Monday, and I haven't seen a Senate version of this, so I don't know where this bill is, I know that it's had a public hearing. But I think it's something that we as a town municipality and as a utility monitor should look at, because it does affect homeowners directly in terms of repair rehabilitation fund system. Now, I have questions about the bill, I'm not saying, but I think it's something we need to keep an eye on, and I would like, we'd like to have a little discussion, is see where MML is on this, if it's gotten that far, and what our delegation thinks, and any input that they may have, delegate Otto and Senator Caroza's office. I think these are things that we need to keep an eye on. I understand that this bill has been introduced, this will be the third time in a legislative session. So persistence sometimes pays off, and I think it's important that we keep an eye on, because it not only affects our residents in terms of stormwater, it has some revenue implications to municipalities and/or counties, from what I understand from reading it so far, so.
You're talking about House Bill 55?
Yes, it's, I mean, I have it here, it's.
Okay, what's the summary of the bill?
Summary is actually, well, I have the fiscal, but the analysis is, it's rather short. A fund created may be used at the discretion of a county or municipality for the repair of infrastructure that is traditionally maintained by the county or municipality for the benefit of the public, including roads and stormwater management facilities, and may not be used to repair or replace recreational facilities used for the exclusive use or benefit of the members of a condo association or homeowners association, or their guests. So there's no, I'm not going to give you the fiscal summary, because this is state-based, but there is a local fiscal effect. And since they're our neighbors, I think I should point out that, like Comco County obviously knows about this, because they advised that they may need to hire additional personnel to survey HOAs to determine their infrastructure needs, but I think we have, we have DA that can probably fill that role here.
But the fiscal part of that, I think, is coming from, I think the fiscal part, when I read the bill, the way I interpreted it was that the town would levy those additional dollars that were needed to cover the costs of the infrastructure improvements.
Yeah, that's where.
It wasn't coming from the state, I think it was coming, the local jurisdiction would levy that.
It was, but my, one of my questions would be, the way I interpreted it was, it was the tax revenue from HOA or condo residents went specifically to this, I'm not sure it was the entire tax, that's where I'm a little unclear. So those are things that I, we would like more information. But I did kind of want to have a, I mean, obviously District 2 is not the only ones that flood here in town.
No, not at all.
So I think that each year we do have Darrell come up and give kind of an overview of where the stormwater utility is as a whole. I think each time we bring him in, it's not free. We do get billed, so it does erode the capabilities of the fund to be able to use his time for other things. So I think that these are all really good things, but maybe it's best to coincide that request and that meeting with when he comes before us publicly.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm with that, and I do definitely have some art for funding earmarked for stormwater.
Yeah, but we're trying to do that toward projects, unless it is time or.
Some of that is earmarked to match some of those grants that.
But yeah, I think they're all good things, and we've got a lot of projects that are coming up, so whenever he's due to come in, maybe we coincide this with his report.
I appreciate that. And my other, my other discussion item is, I was at the councilmembers, Green, Mer, myself, Mayor, Mary, Dave, Ivy, we're at the county commissioners, not the state commissioner, at the county commissioners meeting for their, for the mayor to present our annual fiscal request, and I just was poking around their website, the county's website, and I noticed that they are hosting a public hearing, Dave kind of alluded it too, on April 6th on their land preservation park and recreation plan. And what this is, because I was not totally clear on it, but it's, they revise it every six years, and one year provided, or prior to they hold a public hearing, to discuss the draft. I went on their draft plan, and just to put it in a nutshell here, they're accepting public comment. So I did look at their county parks, they did a survey, and the top four things that reasons folks visit their, visit parks are walk, exercise, relax, and bring their kids. There's a lot more, but those are the top four. So what I was kind of thinking, and what I wanted to present for discussion among the group here, was I think that this is an opportunity for us to collaborate with the county in an area specific relating to the skate park that we're talking about. We've been talking about the skate park for as long as I've been active here in local politics, and we're coming up on, wow, seven, almost 10 years. So I think that it's a good opportunity to do that. I understand that you can, it says on here, written and oral comments will be accepted at the public hearing, so if we can, we as a municipality can offer amendment, I think is probably the best way to go, suggesting a certain fixed amount to request for the skate park to happen here in town. Now, obviously, skate park only in Berlin is not going to be owned for Berlin residents, so I think that this is a good opportunity, like I said, for the county, another partnership between us and the county, and through the state, these are state funds mentioned, so. That is my initial pitch. I'm willing to, if the group is okay with it, I'm willing to draft something and send over a pronoun letterhead, I know it looks busy, but I can draft a letter right quick, as we all know I like to write.
Yeah. Similar to what Ocean City did at their request, they asked for an additional $250,000 for their skate park.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, and I think that, I mean, I know that Tony's here, but the numbers I've been hearing were, if we want to put a number on it, it'd be like 200, 250, just to see what we can get.
Now, the, the stuff that the Parks Commission just worked on, is that in relation to this program as well?
It is, it is, and it is, and the LPPRP is one thing, the Program Open Space Development Plan is another thing, that they do tie together. Unfortunately, when the county reached out to us about the LPPRP, they gave 24 hours for us to respond, so things got missed. However, I am currently working on the Program Open Space Development Plan, which does include the Phase 1 and 2 of the skate park. And that will be discussed at the next council meeting. At the point that the Parks Commission talked about it last week, we thought we had more time, but then they reached out literally the following day and said we need this by March 31st.
Can we pass those items along for this public comment portion, just so that they can see where.
Oh, sure, it'll be, that'll be, the intention is that it's submitted by March 31st, so it'll be in their hands by April 6th. But the LPPRP is a slightly different document, so it's still worthwhile to address that specifically.
Okay, so we're, so that we're all clear, the intention is to mention skate park and a dollar figure, roughly 200 to 250,000, thereabout, in both entities?
Yes, they're, they're connected, they're two different documents, but they do tie together, yes.
So one thing Ocean City had, they had their design work done, they knew their cost. Tony, I know you've engaged company, when do you anticipate that design cost estimate to come through?
Well, Tony, we, basically, we anticipate March 17th having the report back in our hands, 75% complete. To get to 100% complete, they consider that when they come here and head with us to talk about this. From that point forward, the council will have to decide to look at the, where the skate park design company decides or says recommends the best place for skate park to be, and then that's sort of when we can put the stake in the ground. So we're sort of at this cost, but getting this of the LPPRP at this point would be really beneficial, so it's in sort of that long-term plan.
And we have that already with the, the council's already put that as a priority issue for community parks and playgrounds, so there's no reason that we can't carry that forward for this request also. So, okay, the, has the county reached out for any comment on this? I've not seen anything. Now, I do remember going to.
I have, I have actually, not to interrupt, but I've spoken to some county commissioners about this, and they, one said specifically that on the coattails of Ocean City's ass, and the popularity of sort of that, what that brings to town, there would be a high time for us to sort of get on the coattails of that ass and sort of help make this start happening here as well, just that way.
Thank you for that, but the, I know they had a public listening session for this portion at the library as well, and there were residents there as providing comments on all county parks, but we can include the LP, or LPPRP in the consolidated transportation plan, or not, community parks and playground grant application, so the tier one and tier two, along with the Phase 1 ass.
Right now, we have the community parks and playgrounds grant application for the inclusive playground outstanding. Community parks and playgrounds only opens for a funding round, excuse me, at one time of the year, so it's not, it's not a grant that we can apply for at any time.
No, I'm saying where we rank the, both projects as priorities, we can share that with them as like supplemental.
Right now, the way that that, that the development program is developing is the public restrooms at Stadium Decatur Park, because we still have just a little bit more to go to get that done. The community parks and playgrounds grant application for the inclusive playground has to be included on it, because there's a grant application sitting out there. And then after that is Phase 1 of the skate park and Phase 2.
And we want to, but I think we could still reach out about this in particular.
Yeah, I think that's a slightly different.
A different.
But I think we're including those documents to show that it's, it's always helpful to show that it's a priority.
For this, yeah.
So we would include, in addition to the request, now, bringing up the speed, so we're, we're going to be asking for $250,000 for that, for Phase 1? Where is this coming from? Just a general ask matching Ocean City's request, or what are we doing here?
Well, the, the report, and I think, Tony, you can help me out a little bit on this, is it store form, the, the report that you provided?
Yes, Beacon, the Beacon report.
Yes, I'm sorry, the Beacon report, has the breakdown and a total for all the phases. Now, We Heart's already done a majority of Phase 1, which was not, I mean, which was the community input, you know, section. We know that We Heart's been soliciting and accepting donations, so I think that 250 is a good start, since Ocean City asked for that same.
Well, they have, their project is a $700,000 project.
And I think that the total per the Beacon report was around 300,000 or 400,000, from what we're.
I wonder if we should ask for a.
Less.
We gotta, we gotta ground the request in something, that's what I'm trying to figure out, what the something is.
Right, well, if we're building a $300,000 Phase 1.
It's, Reese's discussions.
Do you have any data for anything?
So, in the Beacon report, it specifically sort of spells out all these exact numbers.
It doesn't, I don't have those off the top of my.
Surely, I guess the goal really was just to get, to get the skate park Phase 1 in the LPPRP report, and get that in front of the commissioners on April 6th, both in writing, and I'm going to go actually down to that meeting and make the same, you know, sort of same request from myself and our nonprofit, but to have a letter from the mayor and council saying this, that we'd like to have the skate park added as an amendment under the accessible pro playground, the LPPRP would be beneficial for us in the future, for future asks.
What's the date for the submission?
For 6th.
They're going to need it before that.
It says, will be, will be, written and oral comments will be accepted at the public hearing. Obviously, we want to get to them first, but written comments may also be submitted to so-and-so or to the county.
So at least a week?
So I would say, yeah, at least.
So what we'll do is let's, Tony, can you send?
Let's just give it in as soon as possible.
Can you do me a favor and send me any supplemental information you have that we can ground our ask in?
Yes.
We'll consolidate the LPPRP, community parks and playground stuff in there as well, so it's rooted in something. And then what we'll do is we'll have a draft letter for the mayor and council to approve on March 27th.
So that way at least something was.
That way it's approved as well as a.
Right, and first, you know, everybody will probably see it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. No, no, I think that's.
All right, that concludes the comments from the council. Let's go to comments from the mayor. I just want to say that we did have Buckingham Elementary School here, what was it, Friday? 110 4th graders, it was a good talk. It's for the If I Were Mayor essay contest, we have had some district winners from Berlin, whether that's from Worcester Prep or from Buckingham Elementary.
Quite a few, actually, over the years.
They performed well.
But we never had that many at work.
What's that?
But we've never had.
Students?
Well, 110, how many?
110 with students, well, typically I go to the school.
Right, right.
But yeah, we were able to get them here, so that was fun. We had to thank you all for putting chairs back, I forgot about that.
Actually, I think that was.
I recruited some help from all of you.
Well, thank you, I'm sorry, I forgot about that. I, we had emptied all the chairs out of this room, and all the kids were in here, so thank you for putting those back, I apologize.
Man, for you, though.
Thank you, all of you. I had Tiny Little Charlie helping me, so I'm sure you all were much more efficient.
I'm impressed if you moved those by yourself, because.
Chelsea Charlie, so, and then we vacuumed in here too, so it was nice. So it was good to have them here, hopefully we'll have some district winners to report out as that progresses. Also, we added funding last, during the ARPA plan for the strategic planning. Mary and I have been meeting with Beacon to try and get something moving forward for us on that end, so hopefully there will be more to come, and we're going to phase that project as well, but there is funding in the ARPA plan for that, so open to knock a portion of that strategic planning out.
Will we get to see those essays?
Well, no, we don't, well, actually, they're after volunteers to read them, but I never read them. they're after volunteers to read them, but I, I never read them.
They send them directly.
Yeah, they submit to the state level. So MML puts on the competition, Maryland Mayor's Association helps sponsor it. Uh, they consolidate all the essays at the state level, read them. Last year, we had some district winners. The, hopefully this year, we'll have the same. So then they're all recognized up in Annapolis at the government house.
And I think typically, for the local winners, they've also recognized them at, at the MML Summit Convention there.
And typically, we have them here that were going to come, open up a council meeting, but it's when I had COVID. So I didn't, we, we didn't have them here to open a council meeting, so.
You get to hear some of those.
Oh, they are, they're, they're adorable.
The questions are interesting.
Yeah, and each year, they have a, each year, they have a topic or essay theme. Uh, this year actually fits the municipality pretty well. It's preserving the past and empowering the future. So there was a lot to talk about, about the history of Berlin and the events that we have. And there, there were some ideas to add, what was it? To add a large pumpkin thing, like somewhat like the, like what the city of Annapolis does for Halloween. Uh, one person wanted to have an apple festival. It was cute, I mean, it's always interesting to hear their ideas. But I think one person wanted to cancel something. I thought, oh, no, let's not do that. All right, that concludes my comments. Uh, up next, any comments from the public? Yes, uh, let's start at the front and we'll work our way back. Mike, if you just want to stand, name and, and street name, if you don't mind.
Michael Wiley, Bar Cupport, chairman of the Berlin Parks Commission. I just want to comment on the Rails, the Trails. Um, I've put in many a mile, both jogging and biking on the BNA Trail, which starts just north of Annapolis. It's about 17 miles long. And according to, at one point, that was the most widely-used park in Berlin. I don't know how they could keep track of it being 17 miles long, but it is constantly in use. My children, grandchildren live near it, they're on it all the time. And I think it would be a great asset to the town. It's a very short piece here, but I know eventually there's talk about going all the way to Snow Hill with it. And it's definitely brings people out of the house, gets them on the trail. And I thank the council for being proactive and looking at, you know, giving us leeway with this, so. But I don't think you'll be sorry to get it in the long run. Might take a while to get it rolling and get some life to it, but it's, it's a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we'll work front to back.
Name is Jim Herron, live on Henry's Mill Drive. And I'm directly affected by the erosion caused by stormwater. There's a drainage pipe between my property and property to the south. And on occasion, heavy rains. The water comes up enough where it flows along the pipeline and then gets blowouts. And it's bad enough that on occasion, it blows out the pavement for the road as well. Now, all that water is not coming from Henry's Mill. It's coming from the developments behind us.
Henry's Green.
Yes.
You know, and so it's not fair to the Henry's Mill people to have to pay for that, when it's not really, it, it wasn't their development that caused the problem. You know, we need your help on it. When I originally moved there about 20 years ago, there wasn't much back there. But now there is all those homes and everything. And it's just, there's been years when it had significant damage. This last week, I had some, then I'm going to have to put some rocks down and do some repairs. But, you know, we need help. Now, the town does cut the grass on the open ditchway. But when it comes to the pipeline, I've been told, okay, for the road to the end of that pipe, it's, you know, not their problem. But it is a problem for me and for the community there.
Thank you.
Thank you. I know we've looked at that pipe together a couple times, and that does fall unfortunately on the HOAs. But has there ever been any talk with trying to band together to fix that upstream?
Not that I'm aware of. You know, when I first moved there 20 years ago, I was led to believe that the town was going to take care of that. Of course, it's all new at that point, but since then, they've either reversed or maybe misunderstood them. Something's going to have to be done, because one of these days it's going to be more significant damage.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's, I wasn't going to speak, but you brought it up, so I've got to follow it up. I own property at both Henry's Green and currently in Henry's Mill.
Just name and street name?
Yeah, at Oceanburg.
Thank you.
And, um, as I recall from memory, which is not that good anymore, Henry's Green does not have a homeowners association. Henry's Mill does. So it's not like Henry's Mill, and we are. All their water comes to us, all of it. And so there's not an association over there where we could talk to them about it. So if I was, I'm not their lawyer, but if I was, to bring it to a head, I'd block it off. I really would, I'd, I'd bring a pebble duck truck and fill it up. And then we wouldn't have to do it. Then I know it would be brought to a head. That's an extreme example. But, I mean, something sooner or later has to be done. And it's, it's not fair for everybody in Henry's Mill to be thanked for all the water from Henry's Green and taking care of that pond and the problems that were just just come in. Yes, but that's what you're, well, not that, again.
Just wrong with young men.
While I'm on my feet also, and I just learned this actually coming to the meeting. I understand there was, there's been like a $5 charge and a $10 charge or thereabouts, just added to our water type bill. Is one of those for water management?
So the, and correct me if I'm wrong, if I misspeak, but there, there were some capital fees added to water and sewers because we had something called a SIR cap report done, which was an outside consultant, take a look at the system. We have a lot of aging infrastructure. And with that, we've been able to augment some of those infrastructure improvements with ARPA funds. But the fund really is challenged with using all the revenues for operations and nothing to really set off to the side for capital improvements. So those two fees are set off to the side, not used for operations at all, but just to address some of the, the aging infrastructure, to build that up. Now, with respect to the stormwater side, the mayor and council did act on moving the fees a little bit on stormwater management to address, hopefully, some of the, the larger projects that we need as a, as a town. Uh, some of those are over in the West Street, Abbey Lane area, which I don't know how it flows exactly, but I don't know if that'll take any pressure off of what you're discussing.
Well, the, uh, it, it just seems to me like the town, maybe as a subject that Dave, your lawyer, should look into. But it seems to me like the town, if they don't have the authority, they should have the authority, to bill Lou's and Henry's Green to help take care of, um, the maintenance of the pond that their water goes into on Henry's Mill. And if, if Dave determines we don't have that authority, then maybe we need to go to the legislature to get that authority. Then again, maybe you can do it yourselves. I'm not sure, I haven't thought about it. So something needs to be done. I mean, this gentleman has a serious problem.
Stick with young man.
Yeah. All right, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Don't worry, that's the last.
Next group, yep.
Good evening, Gladys Watson here. I'm, I'm actually, actually asking for a dog park in Decatur Park, okay? Um, I, I presently have a dog.
Can you just say, you said your name, but just your street name, if you don't mind, for the public record?
Street name?
Yep, where, where you live. Just, just, you don't need to give the house, you don't need to give the house.
I live on Oak Court, over there by Seahawk.
Thank you.
Over there by Decatur High School. I actually take my dog to Decatur Park to walk, but I think there's a big space that could be utilized for a dog playground park. I think all these issues that you're talking about, dogs doing things on the street and everything like that, they could walk their dog from Main Street over to Decatur Park and it'd be a gated area. I go to the one that's in Ocean City, and I go to the one that's in Ocean Pines. I love the one in Ocean City, but it's very far. It's 94th Street, okay? Takes me about a half hour to get over there. Um, the fees are interesting because Ocean City is $100 a year, Ocean Pines is 25, okay? Uh, I don't mind the fees because the dogs get to have camaraderie with other dogs, okay? And I think dogs need that just as much as humans need it, okay? Um, it's fun, a lot of parents of these dogs, we sit around and talk with each other and have fun as well as the dogs have fun with each other. Um, there's always the rabies tests and this and that. My dog is already scheduled, he's got that done, okay? So I think with stipulations concerning that, I really would like to see a dog playground in Berlin, anywhere in Berlin, but I, I would like it to be over here in Decatur, but it could be anywhere in Berlin, so we don't have to go to Ocean Pines and we don't have to go to Ocean City.
Thank you. And Mr. Mike said that he's on the Parks Commission, so I don't think that'll fall on deaf ears. And then we'll also make sure we pass that along to the Parks Commission, maybe at their next meeting, that that was brought up. Thank you.
I already wrote a letter to the mayor.
You wrote one to me?
Yes, right.
Okay, well, thank you. I don't, I don't recall your letter, but thank you. And we will make sure-
With my email and telephone number.
Well, thank you so much, I appreciate that.
Because I'd like to get an answer. I think a lot of people, they walk their park, their dog in the park, but I think it needs to be a playground so that other people could, you know, not have to maneuver with their dog with a leash, they can be enclosed.
Well, thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Can I just, I mean, not to, we already had our comments, but if the Parks Commission's going to look into that, I would be very curious on how Ms. Watson, I mentioned rabies and how, how that's like monitored, like how do you register with?
Oh, you're not, you have to turn it in. When you tell your turn fee, you have to turn it in and showing your vaccinations.
All right, thank you.
By the way, they get along very well, by the way. And the ones that don't get along, their, their parents look at it and say, "No, I can't be here." They correct themselves.
All right, let's work the-
I think beyond that, as far as who has paid the fee is primarily the honor system, but-
Yeah, I'm just kidding. All right, let's work the row. All right, I think, Mary Hildeski, I think you're next, and then we're moving right on back.
Uh, Mary, Hildeski West Street. And I just kind of want to bounce off what Jack and Dave and Jamie, the stormwater problems. I lived at Buckingham Estates. There was never a homeowners association put in. When the lane was originally purchased back in 92, 93, the town did run a ditch between behind the houses on Westminster between 1 and 8. And that ditch has never been maintained. It was originally put in because I believe the gentleman's name is Charlie West, that asked the town to put it in to help the drainage in this field. So what's happened now is that we've got sheds, we've got gardens, we've got you name it. There's everything in the world in this ditch except for water flow. And the water backs up back there to the point where, I mean, I know I've spoken to a number of you about this before, where my dog's been marching away and other yards have, and people put in large sheds and things like that. And even up until 2020, early 2021, the town had kept telling me that this was Worcester County's problem. So if there's going to be stormwater or something, if there's anything that we can do about this, I know you all are going to replace the, the ditch there on Abbey, the drainage, which is really appreciated. But the water from behind the houses on Westminster doesn't even make it to that ditch. It doesn't even, it's not even going in the pond that sits there on the corner of Westminster and Abbey. It, it's not even over there. And the other side, that's a whole nother set of problems with Worcester Prep and, so I don't know. Basically, the top of stormwater and trying to do something about it, anything, because it's still a huge problem. And it's not going away.
Thank you. And, uh, just so that everybody's aware, when we started talking about stormwater projects, some of the projects that we're advancing forward with the help of some grant funds are actually centered around Westminster, Abbey, West Street. And actually, when I sat, when I sat in your chair, we got it added to the list, so. But thank you for that. Uh, up next, working the row back, we'll do ladies first, Tony.
Hi, I'm Candy Combs from Henry's Mill. And this is the same discussion that we started here. And we'll be here all night if I tell you everything I know about it. But, um, when Henry's Mill was developed, it was with the intention of developing Phase Two, which could be Henry's Green. And the pond in Henry's Mill was supposed to be sized to use, take the stormwater for both communities. Well, the, um, development over in Henry's Green was sold to a different developer, and so nothing was ever done. And since 2004, Henry's Mill people have been asking the town to get a shared facility agreement with Henry's Green to get help from Henry's Green on the maintenance of our stormwater pond that is taking all of it. We've come to meetings with all kinds of people since 2004 and with various, um, people that were working with the stormwater system, the various mayors along the way, and nothing has happened. We were put on the priority list of the Army Corps of Engineers, and we were high priority. We keep getting bumped down because there are emergencies in the town of Berlin, which we understand, you've got to take care of those and everything. And grants have been, um, applied for over the years, but to this day, no grant has, has been issued for Henry's Mill and that area. We need to be addressed soon. And we need to have something that makes Henry's Green And we need to have something that makes Henry's Green help us out with their stormwater that's coming to us.
Thank you. Mary, can we circle back with Darrell and just via email, find out if HOAs are able to apply for grants?
We'll find out.
And if so, maybe what we can do is, in the past, what we've done, and I'm going back several years, we used to have an application process for nonprofits. And I think it was developed under Laura.
There's not been any money allocated.
Yeah, I'm saying that we used to have a grant application process like that before. In some ways, it gets a little tricky for the municipalities to go onto private property and make some changes. But maybe what we could do is appropriate a little bit of money for a grant writing that HOAs could maybe apply for, for assistance with helping write a grant, maybe?
Well, I can tell you, one of the issues with grants that we've seen with stormwater in the last few years in particular, is that many of the grants are geared toward what they call water quality. And that's a scientific measure. That's beyond our... You know, that's something that they're actually looking at the nutrients that are removed from the system that ultimately end up in the coastal bays. So if they're somewhat closed systems, as far as the agencies that have these monies, they're not contributing to the water quality in a good way or a bad way. They're just not considered as for grants. That's not in every case, but that's in most of what we have been working with. The waters that flow to the coastal bays, as long as we can prove that we're improving water quality, we get those funds. That's where a lot of that has been coming from.
So if we can... I'll just throw this out, but look at it as from a flood mitigation standpoint.
Like MIMA and DHL.
Yeah, because, I mean, like this... Water's flowing from Green to Mills. Water flows from Anne to Franklin Knoll. It's... I mean, we can just get into the... No pun intended, get into the weeds of ditches and all that. But the fundamental thing is, a lot of concrete and weather's changing for whatever power you wanna say why it's changing. We're getting wetter seasons. We're getting more rains. So...
I agree. I agree. It's whether or not the funds are out there.
Yeah, but I think that some of these are like smaller projects.
Possibly.
So I think that maybe what... And it really does make it awkward for us to assist in some ways. But maybe we can assist with like a...
In many cases, we would be prohibited from applying grant funds to privately owned groups, excuse me, projects.
But maybe what we could do, and we're... I'm thinking off the cuff here, but maybe what we could do is try to come up with a way that we can maybe leverage a little bit of money for grant writing that HOAs could apply for. And they could be tapping like Darrell or somebody's expertise for small projects to apply for something. Maybe. I'll take a look, but...
There's gotta be something. I mean, because I know that however great we feel Berlin is, we are not the only people who are dealing with these kinds of issues in this country. And I know that there have been many times where somebody thought grander and bought up all this property, thinking he was gonna build all this stuff and made all these promises and had to sell out before he finished when he started and left half of the people, property owners, holding the bag, quote unquote. So I know there's got to be something somewhere. I mean, it's probably gonna require a lot of digging. And I'm sorry that you ladies and gentlemen, and those who aren't even present from all over this town, have to deal with this because of the growth or whatever that's happening, not just here, but everywhere. But I mean, it's worth looking into.
Mary, would it be possible for the council's benefit to get a map clearly showing the ditches, the ponds of the Henry Mill, Henry Green area?
That is actually a project that we have, EA, working on right now.
Dad, we don't have a clear...
We don't have an old map?
I don't think there's anything with a clear picture of what exists.
Right. It'd be nice to understand how all this system is supposed to work and where the bottlenecks are.
And how it's flowing.
And how it's flowing.
Low arrows.
Even with an old map, look at all the changes that have happened since then. So the original flow has been cut and chopped.
I'm glad you're... The maps didn't work. Having a visual on the road.
Another thing is Henry's Green is not a homeowners association, so they nobody...
Right, so how would you even... That's a question I'm sitting here wondering.
We've been there for a few years. And the ditch between us and Henry's Mill was clean. It's not clean anymore.
Thank you. We have a lot of homework to do now, but not that it didn't exist before, but you got our minds rolling. So that's a good thing. Who's next in the...
I just wanna say three things. I gotta leave real quick.
Just name and street name.
Tony Lee, Bay Street. I wanna thank you guys majorly for helping advance the project of skate park on number two. I think the Derout Dami project has a lot, a lot, a lot of merit. And Berlin could benefit so much from a form-based code. If we could work towards that, it would really help us and help developers who wanna come here develop sort of have a thing they can work towards versus what they can't do, they could build to what they can do. And that's what I think will come out of that. I've watched a lot of his videos. I'm more than impressed and I cannot wait to hopefully be a bird on the wall listening. Lastly, if we could somehow make that rail trail loop around here in Park, just sort of like you were saying, Zach, that we're somehow include the park, that would be probably a pretty cool thing to add to that trail. So it's not just a stop, but the bikers could loop around and come back and go back down south.
So it would probably be a future project just because of funding. But yeah, definitely.
Something we could raise one for the place. Anyway, thank you guys for all your help. And I'll... Blue Buck, West Street.
Thank you. Still working that row across to determine.
Go ahead. You were over to group there.
I lose track of there. I've had a hand. But go ahead.
Wasn't a steep... I'm Linda Palmer, Henry's Mill. And the ditch that was behind my house when I was like the fifth house in the development, the ditch behind me is no longer a ditch. We do have, at the end, we do have the walking path of the little bridge goes over. That's where the ditch is. And it went all the way through almost to Broad Street. Anyway, it was a farming ditch. It was a ditch between the Henry's Green property and my property. And it was supposed to be a ditch. Over the years, it was everyone has filled it and it's flat. So the water that we have for us, I can't remember. The pond water is supposed to be my water coming down from that ditch. The... I don't know what I want to say. I'm just so frustrated. We have been working on this for 20 years. And I come to a meeting about once every... It's my fault. Once every year or so, because I have other things to do. But why is it no one answers it? And my problem is, West Street, I think, is worse than us. Because they have... I mean, it's nothing in her... Never was worse. We got sold a bullet to it, you know, with the way the drainage system works. But there's something has to be done. The town is responsible for Henry's Green, not Henry's Mill. I mean, that's the way it should be. If they're gonna... It's set up like that so that it would come and... Okay, I'm done. Sorry.
Thank you. Yes, just work it right across.
This is short because I mean, I can repeat what's already been said. I live right next to... Oh, by the way, Tom Nassi, Henry's Mill. I live right next door to Jim. So the back of our yard floods with any significant rainfall and creeps up about halfway. And our yard is graded down to that ditch that people have been talking about from Henry's Green. So it floods my yard every single year. And I play grass seed, I don't know why, but it just goes away as soon as the first torrential downpour comes. So just to give you some other food for thought, I am so invigorated by all the projects that I hear, the parks and the bike trails and the recreation and the health of everybody. It's a lively, young, growing town, and we are so proud of it. And it's exciting to talk about, but waste water is not. It's dirty, it's monkey, it's muddy, and it floods. And so it doesn't get talked about.
Thank you. And we... Thankfully, this council has allocated some additional funds from ARCA as well as been able to tap and leverage some substantial grants in stormwater management to tackle some of these projects. I know that some of them are 20-plus years old, but we're trying to whittle away at them. And we hear you. We really do. So moving right across. Daddy, I think you're up.
Thank you. My name is Patty Stevens. I'm the chair of the Worcester County Bike and Pedestrian Coalition. I actually live in Ocean Pines. I wanted to commend and thank the council for your investment or your decision to move forward with Phase One and Two. And thanks to the partner recommendation, gentlemen, for your support. When the coalition first formed three years ago, which was me moving here, meeting Trez Dank from Ocean Pines, meeting Ivy, seeing the Get Ramp activity that happened at the former, whatever it was called, the Old Berlin Falls or whatever, and saying to people that were there, who's doing stuff around creating trail connections in our county? And it was like, everybody had great ideas, but the best plan that had been done at that time, the very first one, was the plan that Berlin did with Lower Shore Land Trust called Berlin Master Plan for brainways and bikes. If you haven't ever read it, it was written in 2014. It's an incredible document. It has background that still stands right now, the why, the how, and the what should be done, including the bikeway that you're now investing in doing. But that was really the document that we held out when we went and talked to Snow Hill and Pocamoke and the county and said, this is the kind of planning that should be done to preserve land, the rights of ways that are created by railroads and utilities and be able to use them for public recreation. But Berlin did the first, really the first heavy lift on that. And you have that as a document to refer to. I was here a couple of years ago when the SGA came and spoke to your planning commission and they said, you need to have a master plan for these things. You need to not come with one little project here and there. And if you have that, made that step towards that kind of investment, I will echo what Commissioner Orr said, or Councilman Orr said about the LPPRP. It's a public plan, it's a public document, it's gonna have this hearing. But in it, it talks a lot about what Berlin has and what Berlin lacks in terms of recreational access. And in their master plan, their spending for capital, they list specific projects that other jurisdictions have asked for, like the dog park in Bishopville. And they have, it says trails, but it says trails in the Northern Athletic Complex. It doesn't say, even though the number one thing that people said they wanted across the county in the listing projects was longer trails for walking and biking that connect places, what it says for what they're gonna spend money on in the next five years is trails within parks, not trails that connect places like what you're trying to do. So I think that it really would be good for you to look at that LPPRP, read it, read what they said the public said they wanted, and then read what they said they're going to invest in. And putting in a specific recommendation for something like the skate park. And I'm going to go to the public hearing and say, your public didn't say they wanted more trails in the parks. They said they wanted more trails to connect things and longer trails. And that land acquisition should be around those kinds of initiatives, not just within parks. So it's a document that will guide open space spending and recreation spending for the next five years. So it's worth it for you to get your comments in there and to show up at that April 6 meeting because it does... Comments that I made at the last public meeting at the library showed up almost verbatim in the plan. So they will hopefully listen. And the towns around you on the eastern shore, Cambridge East and Kent Narrows, Chestertown, St. Michael, Salisbury, they're all making these investments in these trail projects. And our work on the eastern shore is to try to connect those towns and segments to each other. So I'm really excited about the decisions you made here. I'm really grateful for the hard work that Ivy and Dave have done once and twice, and now it'll be a third time. And I really believe the third time will be the charm. So I'm grateful to you and thanks.
Thank you. Let's work the row right on back.
Hi, Mary Fiore, Heart Street. I just wanted to say thank you also for pushing forward with Skate Park tonight. I think the last mayor and council meeting I went to, I mentioned this friend Ben here who wrote you a letter, Mary Tyndall, for your request on Skate Park. And so we just really appreciate it. It's very exciting. Thanks.
Thank you. I do recall your letter. We gotta find yours.
I left it downstairs at the desk.
Okay. We'll make sure we... We'll connect at the end.
I'll get a second one out.
It's okay. We're gonna connect in just a few moments. Once we wrap this up, we'll do one better. Anyone else following row? Okay. Let's see. Comments from the press? All right. And Vice President Burrell's...
I was adjourned.
All on paper? All opposed? Thank you.